By the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll do a roll call.
Leslie?
Here.
Paul Beagle?
President.
Katie?
Here.
Junior?
Here.
Isaac?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
Paul Keever?
Here. All right, so we have everybody. All right, so let's see, is there anybody on there that you didn't know on Zoom there for your minutes? Okay.
And then?
Jim. Jim Doherty, we have Jim Doherty present, welcome. The next thing we need to do is move on to approval of the minutes of May 4th, 2021, our regular meeting.
I'd like to move that we approve the minutes from May 4th, regular meetings.
Do we have a motion?
A second.
We have a second, is there any discussion we need to have about that? If not, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay, so Budget Committee meeting, minutes, May 18th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt and approve the minutes from the budget meeting on the 18th of May.
Do you have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, is there any discussion anybody would like to have over this? Have you heard none, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Financial report. May 31, 2021.
Good evening, before I give the financial report, I just wanted to let everyone know, and so that it was in the recording, the newspaper had a misprint for our budget hearing, and they had printed it on Saturday saying that our budget hearing was going to be tonight, when indeed it is on the 17th. So I just want to make it clear, they did apologize, they're running the new corrected ad, but our budget hearing is the 17th, in case anybody was wondering about that or saw that, that ad posting. And for our financial statement, as you read in Karen's letter, we did sell our bonds, we have received the proceeds. It is a new fund, number 410, Capital Project Fund. You will see the net amount came in, and it's eighteen, eighteen million, four hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. And I say net because our previous water and sewer bonds have been paid off, or refunded through that, and that money was sent to an escrow account, and it was paid off on June 1st, and then all of our fees for selling the bonds with the bond council and the escrow and everything else has been paid off. So this is the amount of money that we have for our project. And there was a, the regular payments for our previous water and sewer bonds, we did issue those, and you will see them in the expenditures this month column, and they're in Fund 520 for the water bond fund and 530 for the sewer bond fund, because those two were previously separate funds, and separate bonds. So those have completely been refunded through this one, through our new geo bond. That's the one, that big item that I wanted to point out for you guys, and unless somebody has some questions?
I don't, does anyone here have any questions? Thank you, Marta, nobody seems to have any questions.
Okay.
All right, so that takes us to our public comments, Jim, did you have anything anyone to share today?
No, I'm just here to say hi, and see how the new neighbors evolve.
No, it's too early to tell.
Yeah, okay.
Well, welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so we'll jump down to, excuse me, Action Items Resolution, seven dash twenty twenty-one, Pointing of Custodial Office.
I think the chamber, is anybody on from the chamber to do their?
Yes, I'm here, Renee.
Okay, it's your turn.
Okay, sorry.
No problem. So we have our chamber luncheon next Wednesday, June 16th at noon, we'll be on Facebook once again. I will have two guest speakers at that, we'll have Gary Shelton from Ipro as well as Victor Vander does from Moore County Health District. Then later at the end of this month, on June 23rd, we'll be doing a rub and cutting for Windermere Group One's new office and boardman. And we're also doing the fireworks for the 4th of July, as with music broadcast on the radio to go along with that on KOHU the Q. And then the Sage Center is now open on Saturdays for the summer, so our current hours are Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Science Fridays are also starting up this month at the Sage Center, they're doing day camps Fridays throughout the summer in partnership with Oregon State. And there's still a few spots available, so if you're interested in signing up your kids, or know of anyone who is, that can be found on the Sage Center website. And then some of our other members also have some summer activities going on, including UEC's Hydro Mania and the Park and Recs, fantastic kids. That is all I have for updates for today.
All right, thank you, do you may have any questions? Okay, we'll move to Resolution seven dash twenty twenty-one, Pointing of Custodial Office. This is a resolution that we need to have our motion.
Yes, this is just standard bookkeeping for the year to have the county treasurer take care of our funds.
So I move we pass City of Moore, Resolution seven dash twenty twenty-one, Resolution, where Moore County Treasurer as Custodial Office.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, having hearing done, we need to have a roll call vote.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paul Beagle?
Aye.
Katie?
Here.
Yes. Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Paul Keever?
Yes. So we have another person, you know, I don't know you.
Actually, Mayor, I'm Tamara Mabbe, that's her name. They have.
Oh, Tamara.
Socker.
Tamara, who?
Mabbe is last name.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought it said seven fifteen, so I would have been.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, seven.
The agenda said seven fifteen.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, very much.
Let's go down to the Resolution eight dash twenty twenty-one, declaring election to receive state revenues. Again, that's just, uh?
Yes.
These resolutions are pretty much just bookkeeping resolutions?
Yes.
All right, I'll move that we approve a resolution declaring the city's election to receive state revenues, City of Boardman Resolution eight dash twenty.
Do we have a motion and a, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Okay, so we'll do a roll call.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paul Beagle?
Aye.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Paul Keever?
Yes. So we'll move to Resolution nine dash twenty twenty-one, OCDC specific funding.
I move that we adopt the resolution to accept and extend funds from Oregon Child Belts Coalition, Resolution nine dash twenty twenty-one.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion that anybody would like to have over this?
Well, I, I think you should know what this is about.
It's for this place over here, right?
Yes, but the city, you know, had the block grant, then we ran, they ran shorter funds, so they, OCDC had to go out and apply for more money, so this is their, more money they're adding to the pot, so that you know that this is coming from them to finish up that.
Now, is this a million and a half coming to us, or?
Well, Marta, we pay the bills, we're paying the bills, and we're using their money first.
Okay, so are we going to get reimbursed for the money that we've expended to pay their bills?
Marta?
Yes, I actually, I issue them an invoice first, and once I receive their funds, then I pay out the, the payment application to the contractors.
Okay, so Marta, my question to you then, if we're paying their bills with our money, are we going to get reimbursed for the expenditure?
Yes, we get the reimbursement first before I issue out the payment. So OCDC sends me their money first, and then I go ahead and pay the bills.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it really isn't our money either, I mean, we received a grant from the, for a block grant to do this project, so it's, it's always been somebody else's money.
But we're the managers of the money.
Yes, we're the manager.
So this is kind of a bookkeeping?
Yes.
Type thing?
Yes.
Make sure that we're okay with bookkeeping.
Well, and it allows us to have, you know, maybe a facility in our community that we couldn't afford otherwise.
Got you. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, we have any more discussions? Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Leslie?
Yes.
Paul Beagle?
Aye.
Katie?
Yes.
Junior?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Paul Keever?
Yes. All right, so we'll go ahead into the ordinance, this is going to be a little different, it's going to be a first reading about the council rules. It doesn't have a number in front of the twenty twenty-one, but we're just doing a first reading.
We'll number this, we wanted to make sure you were going to hear it before we gave it a number, so.
Sounds good.
If you're willing to hear it, we're ready to go. And so it, it basically says that we would like to change our regular monthly city council meeting to the second Tuesday of the month, instead of the first Tuesday, that, to begin at 7:00 a.m., and that we can re, rehear this, just like these other resolutions we just did at the beginning of the year, we can bring it up just in that bookkeeping thing, and see if you want to continue to do it. If, if this way, we left that, so that if, the calendar, this year and next year are really bad for the first Tuesdays of the month, and so, but maybe five years from now, they'll be perfect, you know, and then you'll want to move back to the first Tuesday, but.
This usually is for discussion, but this change in the date really puts a kink in my schedule.
Okay.
The second week just is, it just makes it really hard for me, if we moved it to the second week, I know in your letter that you said, or explained how difficult it is to work with the news, the newspaper.
And, you know, and if, if, if you don't want to vote, yeah, but you can vote it out, I mean, or not hear it, and it just will go away.
Because I'm just afraid that if I move it to the second Tuesday, then I gotta redo my whole schedule for the year.
Okay.
And make, and it just makes it difficult, and now, and I don't want, I, I kind of made a choice to make sure I was here, because I'm missing my kid play basketball, because I said I would play to the place, mayor.
Okay.
Okay. Be.
Be the mayor in person tonight, so.
No, and that's important, and you made that commitment with that calendar set at that, and so I think everybody else also did, that. And so if the first Tuesday of the month works better, then that's just what we'll stay doing, and like you say, well, maybe some months you'll just have to get your financial part a little later in the month or something.
Because like in July, we already talked about having to change a date, because I think some of us were saying that.
Yes, we, yes, because we need to change the date in July to the 13th, so that we can get some stuff on the planning commission, so.
But I just wanted to share that at the beginning, before we started, when we talked about this.
Well, for more discussion on the topic, changing the date on occasion, or even two months in a row, like we're doing this year, with a June one and a July one, doesn't necessarily mean that every month needs to reflect that same status, so it would be nice for, for me as well, if I can be committed to, to the one that we assigned on for when we were elected.
That's perfect with me. So then I guess you just do not, that's part of why it wasn't numbered, because if you number it, then we, it's always, it's always in the numbering system, so.
So if we're going to move forward with this, this ordinance, then we need to have someone does a first reading, is that correct? Is that how we move?
If, if you're wanting this to pass, somebody needs to make a motion, and then somebody will make a second motion.
Second motion, as far as the first reading?
Right.
So someone will, if, if it, if we're going to move forward, we're going to have, someone's going to make the motion for the first reading, and if we're going to carry forward, then someone will second that, and that will move it to the next meeting, do we, then we don't vote on it though, right?
Until the second.
Yeah, not until the second.
Not until the second, okay.
But if either no one motions, or no one seconds it, then it dies.
Correct, and it dies, right, and so I was just kind of getting that out there as far as.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Beagle.
Did we not motion and second this very same ordinance back in March, and it was tabled to bring it up, and it wasn't on the agenda for the May minutes, so it was put on the agenda for this meeting?
We looked back at the minutes, and it was not, we never completed a motion or tabled it. Then it just left, it just, just left. And I can, I can, I can, I'll be happy to show you the minutes.
Please.
Because I thought Mr. Mayor tabled it until the next meeting.
Well, so that's why we went back and made sure and got the tape out and revisited it.
We tabled the, the discussion, now I can't remember as far as a motion and a second, now.
There was a motion, Mr. Grayrock.
There wasn't a legal ordinance written up, it was just something that was written up to discuss.
So is that what, what the confusion is, is that whether it's a per motion and a second, as far as the discussion, or is there a difference?
If there was a motion on this, then it would have went to a second, and it would have either died, or it would have passed. So what happened was, it was tabled, the, there was discussion, and it was tabled to the next meeting. There was never a, a motion to, to approve this.
I do recall, I do recall, Mr. Beagle brought what he thought was an ordinance, that he had written up.
Yes.
And he wanted to go through with that process, but at that meeting, there was a lot of discussion, and we agreed at the time that we had used most of our evening already, that we would like to discuss it at the next meeting. And I believe it, if there's a ball that got dropped, it was that we didn't bring it back up at the next meeting, so. But we didn't have an official ordinance established by the city for us to review, and approve, and vote on, so.
So this is, if you want this to go, Mr. Beagle, then it would be this.
Yes, this is the one, but if you want to do that, you're going to have to.
So if you wanted to do that, Mr. Beagle, you could be the one to make the motion. Does that make sense? And then if somebody seconds it, then that takes it to the next reading.
Well, in light of everybody boffing at it, and, you know, it doesn't have a snowball's chance in a very warm place of passing, so how would we talk?
Is there anybody else that would like to make a motion? Okay. Other business.
Okay, I put on the, your agenda that the Building Department, IGA with Moore County.
Yes.
They, they sent us a proposal to change the IGA for the building fund between the City of Boardman and Moore County, and they are, they were asking for 50% of the proceeds, and we replied back that, no, we, we felt like that we did the, the work, we were doing a good job, and that we weren't inclined to want to change the fee structure.
That was after our executive session, correct?
And so I brought it back up so that you can have a public and state how your, what your feelings are about this.
So, let's see, it was the build, oh, I forgot your name.
Not me?
Yeah, because I'm building guy, right?
Yeah, Glenn.
Glenn, so when we were discussing, you were adamant about some things, right?
It's my opinion that we're providing a service, we should not expect to do that service for half the fee.
And there was a fee that you felt that we should?
Well, there's basically like that, that document, I put it in the packet, there's basically two kinds of fees that we collect. We collect permit fees and planer fees. Right now, the, the county receives 25% of permit fees that are collected in the county, and the city boardman retains everything else. And their proposal is that they receive 50% of the permit fees, and also 50% of planer fees, except for fire life safety, which that fine duty fee is kind of earmarked for fire part.
Right, and we weren't going to mess with that.
Right, and they did remove that in their original.
So I think our discussion was that we were pretty much in support of what the city was recommending for the agreement, and I think it was about a, did we counter proposal two?
No, the, the, the discussion that we had last time was that our position is to maintain the quote, the status quo, keep the fees where it has it is now, it's been working for 21 years, you know, the county's getting a good solid service. I see there was a change.
Can you bring up, what, why did they propose such a drastic jump, what was the reasoning behind that?
I'm not sure, they're here, they, they.
Okay.
It would be appropriate if she answered questions, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a problem with, I mean, it would be an appropriate time to share and try to figure out what we can do, and what's going to happen, and things like that, if you don't mind.
Um, Mr. Rick?
I want to go real quick, just, who are you, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I see Commissioner Russell is on, Commissioner Russell, Commissioner Doherty is here, just want to make sure you're aware of that. I'm just here to kind of take in the discussion, actually wasn't fully aware that the IGA was on the agenda, and I know Commissioner Russell and Commissioner and Tamara have been working with this, this city in, in Karen on, on this project. I, I think one thing I want to kind of make a little bit certain upfront a little bit is, is I think this is a discussion at this point, I'm not sure, that they haven't actually brought back, you, you know, kind of what they've drive down to the VOC for, you know, this is our official proposal in Karen, but, but you guys certainly, you guys are doing whatever you do, so, I just want to let that out, and let Commissioner Russell know I was here, and I will, but, you know, I mean, certainly not get away and work for any decisions, so.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Russell has raised his hand. All right, Commissioner Russell, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mayor, so, there's a, a couple of changes, you know, the IGA we have with the city, the county has with the city is like 20 plus years old, hasn't been changed, hasn't been updated, hasn't been reviewed, and the county's in the process of reviewing it. The reason for the change in the rate is, that's what we find in our region, that the average rate is. So if we were to look at our neighbors to the west, the city of Hermiston, the city of Yumatilla, the city of Pendleton, and what they share with Yumatilla County, that's what they share, it's a 50-50 split. Is that the right rate? I don't know, but that's the average, and I guess my opinion is, if, if I were looking for a plumbing contractor, what's the average rate, the county is looking for a building contractor, what's the average rate? There's a couple of other things that we would like to, to see in this intergovernmental agreement, and a little bit of it is redundancy, so I know that, that Glenn does, and there's nothing, absolutely nothing wrong with the service that the county has been getting from the City of Boardman. It's, it's been great service, but the City of Boardman's Building Department is basically one guy, and that's Glenn McIntyre, and what happens if Glenn goes down for whatever reason, he goes on extended vacation, he has an illness, he, you know, has an accident, whatever. We would like to see some redundancy in the program, and I guess the best, we would like to see that in writing. So we would like to see a reciprocal agreement with somebody else, besides the City of Boardman, that says, if, you know, for whatever reason, our guy's on vacation, our guy has an illness, our guy has whatever, that this other entity is going to pick up the slack and, and fill in for us. And the best way I can describe that is, is I think that the emergency service districts in the counties, specifically fire districts, have done a phenomenal job of signing intergovernmental agreements on mutual aid agreements with other fire districts, and so if the Boardman Fire District becomes overwhelmed with a catastrophic fire, other people are going to react to help, just as if the city of Arigan or the city of Hermiston has a catastrophic event that overwhelms their resources, the city of Boardman will react to help. And, and we would like to see that codified in some type of written agreement. And that's really what the county is, is asking for, is a more formalized agreement after 20 years of a fairly loose agreement, that, that we, I guess, update things a little bit, and, and have, have some backup plan in case something happens, and, and have that in writing, and then we charge each other what the going rate is. You know, the, the City of Boardman is in charge of their own building program inside the city limits, Moore County is in charge of their own building program in the unincorporated areas in the county, and with that, we've contracted with the City of Boardman for the last 20 years, and it's time for a rate review, and that's really all our request is, is, is to look at rate review and see what other people are charging, and.
So are we charging too much, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I'm telling you that if, and, and we're, we can contract with anybody we want, and if we contracted with the city of Yumatilla, or the city of Hermiston, or the city of Pendleton, they would charge us 50% of the fees. And currently, the city of Boardman charges us 25%. Or they, they, they give us 20%, 25% of the building fees, and, and they keep 75%, and if we did it with Hermiston or Pendleton or, or Yumatilla, it would be a 50-50 split. And, so, and, and I, I would say that, you know, I, I know the City of Boardman does the lion's share of the work on this, but you're restricted in where you can spend the money, and you're si, sitting on a very large nest egg, and your city government can tell you how much that nest egg is, but it's really large and you can't spend it, because. Because, you know, I, I mean, just can't spend it, so why not share it with the county who may be able to spend it and, and help the same citizens in Morro County.
I don't think it's a thing that we, Eric, or, but the word may kind of, I mean, you might have the same difficulty that we have as far as what we can spend it on.
Uh, uh, I, I believe you're correct, Mayor, but, uh, again, I think that the going rate in our region, and I'm including Umatilla and Morro County in our region, I know the city of Boardman contracts with Gillum County. The going rate in our region is a fifty-fifty split. And, uh, right now, it's a, a twenty-five percent split to the county and seventy-five percent split to the city.
This be moving forward, so like if we made agreement that it'd be start with all incoming funds, is that what it would be?
Would just be, uh, yeah, it would be incoming funds, just again, outside the incorporated area of the city of Boardman. Um, or, or all cities in the county and, uh, the unincorporated areas. And, and, and to be specific on it, what we're talking about are, are really primarily unincorporated areas at, at the port of Morro and, and, uh, surrounding the city of Boardman, city of Arigan, that's where all the growth is in the unincorporated areas in the county.
Yes.
Um, well, I just have a question, so if you did contract with other areas, as you said, you know, Hermiston or Hermiston or whatnot, they have more than one person that's working. Glenn's by himself doing everything, and so if you're wanting fifty percent more, would that include extra? In that case, otherwise he's doing, you're doing all the work for. Yeah. I feel like there's a little bit of a difference here in Umatilla County.
Can I touch on that too? I feel like, I'd like to understand if all other variables remain equal, equal. What is the advantage besides the cost difference or charge difference by going to another community for those services?
And I, I also have questions about the rates, are the rates the same in Umatilla for building fees as they are in, um, Morro County?
No, those three jurisdictions are higher than this.
Substantially higher?
Oh, not substantially.
Okay, but higher? So they're splitting a larger pot of money.
Yes, they would collect a larger amount.
And then where people work at.
Those are the cities to the west.
Yes, the cities to the west.
That would be to the east.
Yes, to the east.
Did you hear those questions, Commissioner Russell?
And I also.
So I think I heard some of them and, and somehow due at the, uh, what the charge for, for building permits are. And the city of Boardman currently is setting the, the rate for building permits and they are lower than surrounding areas. Uh, the split on a smaller number is the split on a smaller number. Um, but, uh, a- as far as, you know, the split itself, I mean, think of it as a franchise fee and the city of Boardman works in the county's franchise area. And we can choose anybody that we want to, to work in that franchise area. Um, and so, you know, for the last twenty years, we, we've, again, chosen the city of Boardman. And, uh, uh, and it's, and the service is not the question, I mean, the service is stellar, I, you know, Glenn does a really good job. Um, there's, I don't wanna, you know, disparage the job that Glenn does because he and staff do a really good job of building inspections, is timely and stuff. Um, it's just that, uh, you know, the, the, the split rate is, is not what the norm is and, and, uh, I think our county planner is on the line, possibly, I know she was supposed to be on it and, and maybe Tamara can give a little bit more description than what I have, um, so I, I guess if, if I got a minute, I would yield to Tamara Mavitt, our county planner.
Yeah, sure, I'm sorry, Tamara.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm gonna stand this because I'm kind of a kinesthetic thinker, but, um, I appreciate the discussion very much. I just wanted to point out, um, it's like a history lesson, so I was actually your county planner back in ninety-five to two thousand. And, um, Morro County assumed the program from the state of Oregon at the request of the city. Brett Coke was your building official, a friend of mine, Brett and I worked together. Um, prior to that time, your building program was inside Boardman City Limits exclusively. So when Brett said, hey, why don't you think about, um, the county assuming the program, because at that time, we sold building permits in the county planning office. Um, and really received a diminutism amount of money, like a certain pro rate of each permit. And I said, gosh, county court, it makes sense, local service, and we would be, we, the county would be helping out the city of Boardman. Because again, you had one building official for the city, and remember, things weren't really booming like they are now. And a lot of your development in the city now is in the city, but a lot of the projected development is outside the city. Uh, so it was a very good partnership, so that agreement is several years old. My predecessor, Karen McLean, I have a letter inherited in twenty-fourteen where she sent it to Karen and said, there's several things we'd like to talk about. I'm not exactly sure what happened to that, so when I came back to the county, um, a couple of the commissioners said, hey, let's take a look at that intergovernmental agreement. The program's working well, I really like Glenn, he does terrific service. Um, money is only a small part of it, and I really, um, it pains me to hear the discussion focused just on the dollar value. Um, you know this very well, Karen and Glenn know this very well, the Oregon law and the Oregon law for anything related to construction has a lot of, um, labor union ties to it. What you can use that money for is extremely restrictive. So you have, I don't know, eight or nine million dollars in your fund, we have about a million dollars. It's a, it's a solid amount of money anyway you count it. The explicit purpose for use of that funds is to be spent on the building program, hiring a building officials, support staff, et cetera, nothing else. So if you ever have a conflict with the labor union, and if you've ever had that, it's a serious one to take notice to, they will call you and say, I'm an exact accountability of what you've used those funds for. So the building program, you, Morro County has an operating plan that has to be approved by the state of Oregon and it's a, it's a current program. It's Morro County's program, we contract, the city of Boardman works for the county. But it's also, and it's been a good relationship. But if something goes wrong, heaven forbid, I like Glenn, I don't want anything bad to happen, he falls and breaks a leg and he's out of work for a month, guess who's on the hook to provide the service? Morro County is. If you've got a major development at the port outside the city limits, it's our responsibility to provide the service. So do we need a nest egg in that fund? Absolutely. Do you need, um, uh, safety, um, precautions? Yes. So as Commissioner Russell said, reciprocity agreements is one of those things. So over the past few months, we've met with Karen and Glenn a couple of times, both on the phone and in person. There were a whole host of things we discussed. Um, Karen and Commissioner Gordy met and, um, had reached a consensus and then apparently brought it to you in executive session and then got back and said, deal's off, we don't, we, we're not gonna change anything. Again, it's not just about the money. We are looking for redundancy in agreements. Um, by law, if you have, uh, another city that fills in in your absence, that is supposed to be in agreement in writing. So if Umatilla Fire or West Umatilla County Fire backs up your fire department, that's not just a hate call. You have those conflagration, you have those formal agreements right now, that's part of what we're asking. We're looking for redundancy with that. We also ask to clarify the time for review, I don't have any reason to believe that Glenn's time to review for, for plans is slow, it's certainly better than the state of Oregon, absolutely codistic, Glenn. Sometimes, if you're in Umatilla County and you're a developer, you, you mail Snowbell, US Postal Service plans to Salem, and you're lucky if your plan review is in two weeks, it's, it's terrible, we don't ever wanna go back to the city. I'm also asked, um, the city and I've spoken with, um, Hermiston and Umatilla, would you all like to get together and talk about regional collaboration? Not unlike your safety services, let's all talk about where our programs are. Who has a electrical inspector, a plumbing inspector, other building officials? The city of Umatilla has, um, all of those right now. Um, the state of Oregon is their backup for electrical once the COVID rules expire. The, um, so, and the city of Umatilla also has e-permitting, so every, every contractor, so data centers in Umatilla, data centers in this region, they could submit all of their plans online with e permitting and it works really well. These are some of the ideas that we have been discussing and we'd like to continue that discussion, it makes sense. Excuse me, for Morro County to keep it in the county, right, with Boardman? But we all have to discuss about some of these really important things. I don't wanna get a call from Ryan Neal that says Tamara or Chairman Russell, um, Glenn can't provide service, you're responsible, who's gonna be my inspector? We need to have conflagration, if you have a call out and you're heading down I eighty-four chasing a car, OSP is your backup, right? I mean, that's how you're all trained and that's the sort of regional approach that we're looking at. Um, so again, I wanna say that it's a good program, there are just a few things that we need to take a look at. The example in the proposal we shared with Glenn and Karen about sharing, again, as Chair Russell said, those are in line with other regions and other places in the state. So again, the reason we would want more of that share, the program goes south, I need to pick up the phone and call whatever city I can to provide that service if in the unlikely event something happens to the city. The city of Umatilla, by the way, has two building officials. And they will even give us a preferable rate, one is a part-time community development director and part-time building official. Willing to give us two officials for a more favorable rate with electronic permitting and some other redundancies, just things to think about. Again, our first choice is here, I was discouraged when it went to the council in executive session without letting county staff explain our side of that, anyway, I talked too long, happy to answer any questions you might have.
It sounds like you, uh, suggested we hire another employee.
It might be, it might be.
I mean, we got seven million dollars to do it, so, I mean, shoot, but, I mean, I'm being sarcastic. But I guess the sour grapes, you kind of touched it on before, since our county is starting to, uh, become so prosperous, where the battles are coming, it is all about money. And that's the, I mean, we have a lot of issues that, um, in our county, cause there's a lot of things, uh, without going into great detail, but I think money's the root of all evil kind of thing, is where we get the most contention. There's, there's money and everybody wants a piece of that pie. And how we be able to negotiate and how to make it to where one side's not getting gypped, I mean, why are we getting a school district, they wanna do a school bond? It's all about money, on how we're gonna do it and how we're gonna vote for it, and I mean, so Glenn, you had your hand raised though.
Well, I just wanted to respond to Tamara's comments that the majority of the items in that draft, I, we really don't have a problem. Um, I've already started with the state of Oregon, it's actually in the IGA, just that allows me to do electrical inspections as well, that hasn't kicked in yet, and then I've, and did a conversation with Brandon, and he's all for that too, if he's down, I go cover him, if I'm down, he covers. And believe me, I haven't taken more than a day off in a row since I started here, I'd love to take a vacation. But, uh, so the majority of those things, we're, we're very willing to, uh, to accept most of it.
And I think the city has pretty much allowed the, I mean, the city, the council's pretty much given the city to come up with an idea on how they wanted to do that, to be able to negotiate that. And then they come back to us and we talk about it and then we agree or disagree. Uh, cause to be honest with you, I fully support, uh, our staff here a hundred and ten percent. And so when they think that something is not fair, they usually explain why and they share that. Uh, so I, I fully expect them to continue to discuss and come with, with a an agreement that is fair, yes.
Sorry, there's one more thing I wanted to touch on, is that, um, yeah, east of here, the, the common split is fifty-fifty, even higher in, you know, in some instances. But I know the new jurisdictions that, uh, there is a zero split. I know that Marion County, uh, they cover a lot of little towns, Marion County. And the state of Oregon's saying like, state of Oregon plus a hundred percent. So regionally, yeah, it's a, it's a fifty-fifty split, but it's not, it's not a hundred percent in the state, right?
I had an additional question. I, I know Glenn, that you put out every month for us, uh, listing, uh, the various jurisdictions that you subpermits to. I, I say we subpermits, Morro County, Arigan, permits sold, manufacturer placement, permits sold, new home construction. And, um, I'm curious, because I understand that we, our jurisdiction is rather small for the city of Boardman. If you just take in just exactly what's here, but how many of these Morro County permits are sold in the nine-seven-eight-one-eights zip code?
I don't know that.
Could you look at that maybe at some point and? Yeah, and just give us kind of a rough number, because I think thirty-one permits for Morro County seems really high to me, given some of the, uh, given that most, in my mind, a lot of that's happening in that nine-seven-eight-one-eight zip code arena.
Well, a lot of the permits that are being sold for the county is more commercial than residential, in the city, it's just the opposite.
Yes, okay, that's good to know, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Sandy Tomes, raise your hand. Oh, okay, uh, Sandy Tomes, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just, uh, it sounds to me like since the city has so much funds in the building funds that, um, maybe they should think about hiring someone, um, in case something happens to Glenn. I, I understand the county's position, but, um, to me, it makes more business sense to hire someone within the city to, um, train and back up Glenn, that's just my suggestion, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. So what is that?
Yeah.
There is nobody available.
We have like a physician open and it's just no calls or?
No, we're, we're not currently recruiting for anybody, but there's a real shortage of people in the building codes industry. I mean, it's basically.
But probably opening a, a word open is better than not having the physician posted just for the dangling of the line.
But it's all challenges.
Yeah, I mean, there's enough work.
I thought we had some intergovernmental agreements established with some of the other areas.
Do you want me to?
No, I mean, to cover us when we can't provide service.
They're all, just can't shake.
Everybody just, who doesn't have that blessing of awesome, they'll get, they just don't get sick and they don't, they get anxious.
Glenn, you might want to fact that you're not ignoring that, you're, that you're creating the Philly Tech one, Tech two, your intentions are to have residential inspector, you've got a plumbing inspector, now that you're, you're electrical inspector, I mean, there's several things you probably need to discuss.
Well, the, the long-term goal is to bring on people for every discipline. We don't have enough work to bring on people for each discipline. But we hired a plumbing inspector, he works part-time. Might spring on Mrs. Mitchell's perspective, move that person, that person, that's the goal. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a.
I'd love to see it, yeah. I'd love to see us work on, you know, just opening lines to, to bring in departmental help as well. Any other discussion that we'd like to have regarding this?
Mr. Mayor, I, Commissioner Russell still has his hand, I don't know if he's still.
Commissioner Russell, do you have any more comments you'd like to share?
Let me unmute and try that again. You know, in, in my opinion, as, as a county, the best thing we can do is continue to contract with the city of Boardman, because if we because if we, if we take dollars out of the county to another area, it's dollars that go out of the county. But at the same time, you know, there, there are certain things we could do to shore up the plan a little bit. The regional approach that Tamara talked about, I think, is, is smart. Mr. Mayor, I, I know you understand that the regional approach that all the fire districts have taken, where we have reciprocal agreements with all the other fire districts in case something happens. This is not necessarily unlike that. And then, again, the fee is, I think, should be negotiated a little bit tighter than it is. That's, that's just my two cents worth, and, and I'm only one of three commissioners, but, but that's my two cents worth.
I appreciate it, thank you. Anybody else have any comments that they have concerning this? Yes?
Have we identified what those funds would be used for, Tamara, specifically?
So for the county, we are, we have to use those funds to write the program. I know the city on the, in your budget funds, five FTE, not sure where the, are the county. Any FTE, we're starting July 1 to fund a portion of an FTE just for our role in the oversight administration. But again, it's our program and our responsibility. So if we need to turn around, if there's a, a failure in the service at Boardman, and, you know, an unlikely scenario, that those funds would be used, it, it might be a, a charge account by a private developer. The legislature is looking at allowing municipalities a lot of pressure from rural areas to be able to hire a third-party entity. Because as Glenn said, it's really hard to find building officials. You typically make a lot more money really working in the free market than you do being a building inspector. So again, we would build up our reserve, just like you've built up your reserve. And I know that you use some of your building fund, the offset portion of a, of a building, and, and that's legitimate, as long as you can document that those funds are for your building fund. You know, if they came from the building fund, they, they were dedicated to a building for that. So we would be doing the same thing. And, you know, tomorrow, we could advertise to have a building official. That's exactly right, they're really hard to come by. That's not what we want to do, that's not the direction I'm getting from the chairman. We, in a couple of weeks, we'll probably take this to the full board for more of a discussion. It's best to keep it in-house, but we need to modernize it a little bit with electronic permitting, just like we have electronic meetings. A few other things, redundancy, and then also look more in line with the schedule as part of it. So again, it would, we wouldn't be doing much different than what you're doing, but it's our program, we're building a fund that protects what we have to have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We do fund five positions, two of them are unfit. So we actually fund 2.6 people. So those, we care, we keep those positions in the budget for the eventuality we might need to pack up. That's fair for us, they're unfit. And we have started working on e permitting. We've got our own accounts and we're learning it. What I'm saying is easy to use once you know everything. So I just wanted to address those two, those two topics. Thank you.
You got something?
I think, I think I have to say is that I don't think the issue has ever been that we don't agree that we can have an IGA with somebody next door, that we wouldn't go to e permitting. I mean, we intend to do all those things, so I think that's just conversation. I didn't realize that the day Brett quit, that I could have called you and said, hey, you got a problem. I thought I had a problem, and I, I took care of that problem. You sure did, absolutely. And so it seems to me that when the county comes and wants 50% of something that we have done very well at taking care of, maybe, maybe we should rethink the amount of money. Because this isn't about any of those other things that you discussed. It is all about money. Whatever.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I appreciate the fact that Commissioner
Russell.
Russell. And is second-in-command, come to enlighten us on rules that we already are aware of. And, and I feel that, just me personally, that they're threatening us to turn us into powers of deed, so that if Glenn misses something, then, oh, well, we're going to get fined. And if, if that's the case, then they're going to take all of their applications for permits and overseas to another county where they have more personnel than we do. So I, you know, I, I appreciate them coming and reaffirming the things that we already know, but I'm still not convinced that they need to get 50% more.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to share? Tamara, do you have anything else you'd like to share?
Just, I appreciate the ability to have an open dialogue. If you, I don't know their protocol, but if you, Mr. Mayor, or a member or two of council want to join us for these discussions, I'd love to have somebody, for example, when we have a regional meeting, to hear and see how it works in other cities and other jurisdictions. It's a, it's an open dialogue. In my mind, the money is the last part. I'm in the regulatory business as the planning director. I try to turn around permits and permit reviews and keep plans up to date. That's my first priority, and this is no different. You know, just keep things moving, and it's working really well, we just need to tweak it a bit. So I really hope we can have an open dialogue. And it might make sense to have one of the elected officials in the room when we have that, just like we have Commissioner Russell.
Can I ask a question? If the money for your, your side is the last part, and we're saying that anything other than that is not an issue, then are you willing to negotiate what that last part is for you? Because it sounds like to me, the general consensus is, it's the last thing for us, too. So if you were an ingredients on that, what are you willing to give to still keep that synergy that you're, what we have?
Excellent question, that's a board of commissioners' decision. It, you know, we need to take it forward, we need to know that's something open for discussion, because the last message between Karen and Chair Russell was that, that's off the table. So it's, it's all negotiable, for sure. We're willing to listen, we all need to give a little bit, for sure.
I would look forward to seeing you back to hear what that conversation would be like, or what it is, you know, keep it on that, because, I mean, unless I'm speaking up for people that haven't spoke otherwise, it just sounds like that's the last part for us, too.
All right, we'll move right along, thank you. We'll go right to our other business, which is going to be a good one, Fourth of July celebration. Yes?
Yeah, sorry, I just had my hand just where you stood.
Sorry, correct your record real quick.
And, you know, I saw you guys, you know, we sent staff and Chair Russell, so this is, I am absorbing all this, it's a great discussion, but, but just, but when Tamara was speaking earlier, she indicated at one point in your record that Commissioner Gordy had met with Karen. Of course, it was Chair Russell, so I just want to make sure that that's noted in your records.
Appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Gordy. All right, Chief, I guess you get to share what's going on with the, the Fourth of July celebration, where we're at.
Well, as I shared in the email, SNAP told you last week in conversation that, as you're aware, the chamber has decided this year not to sponsor a Fourth of July parade. So therefore, there's a, a couple individuals in town who decided to take it upon ourselves to kind of organize a, an event as required by, or, or, city Boardman, ordinance that are required to have a permit to have a parade. We did submit the permit. After long discussions and meetings with them on several, I met with them in person, talked to them on phone, and exchanged several emails. Part of the requirements that we face as far as doing a permit approval is there has to be a, a defined route, which we were able to come up with something to potentially mitigate large gatherings of people. So we extended the parade route, kind of changed it so that people weren't congregating on Boardman Avenue and Main Street, where they're seeing even have four or 500 people together in a crowd. So we were able to come up with a route. The other, the other two issues that I, I presented to them were that they needed to have insurance. If for some reason somebody was to get hurt or killed, somebody asked to be covering that for insurance purposes, and you can't not have an insurance policy. And when the chamber submits a permit or another, like the high school, they have, they have a chamber, excuse me, they have a blanket policy to cover those events. So far, they have not been able to present me with a insurance policy or even state that they have insurance. The other issue that we're facing is, there is a governor's executive order, which we haven't had in several years before, these last two years, we've had to deal with this. And the governor's order is pretty specific, and I sent you the, the language that was in that order and outlines page three through the Oregon Health Authority that talks about what they have to do to mitigate those issues. And so I explained to them that they need to have a plan in place on how they, not me, how they are able to mitigate people from congregating, and, and how they're going to take care of this. So far, they haven't been able to provide that plan. I sent that information out, I denied their permit request based on that. As I explained, I do think that the city is trying to work with them to try to have an event. I understand everybody's tired of not being able to do something. But as I said in my email, I did take an oath of office to uphold the laws of the state of Oregon. And unfortunately, the executive order by the governor is something that I cannot ignore. So therefore, I request that they provide a plan on how to address this. I can tell you that we are not the only city that has the exact same process that we are following. And, and I explained this in detail. I spoke with the applicant on Friday, explained that they have a right to appeal my decision to the city council, and, and we put it on the agenda for you to hear. Monday morning, she sent me an email stating that they have about five or six people that can help mitigate the crowds from gathering and so on, which is another step forward. I thought we were going to get there. This afternoon, or, well, today, I can't tell you exactly when, I, I observed a video of that applicant who advised that they're, they're just not going to get the permit, and they're going to have a parade in. So part of the reason it was put on for you to, or for her to give you the ability to have an appeal, so she can appeal to you to make a decision if that's something that you want to do. Obviously, I have to be concerned for the welfare of the community, participants in that event, but I also have to look at ability that the city faces and try to mitigate that liability to the best of my ability. And ultimately, I have to adhere to the law, so.
Yes? So what is the difference between a sanctioned and non-sanctioned event? As far as the city's concerned?
If, 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 if we sign off on the permit, then that means we are authorizing that parade, and that therefore it's a sanction. And then the city would also, most likely, the police department, as we have in years past, provide traffic control for a safe route that can flow effectively and efficiently.
And if it ends up happening as a non-sanctioned event, or is that the city? If it happens and it's a non-sanctioned event?
Either way, it puts me and, and the city in a really tough position. Because if they don't comply with the permit, then they, they could be, they could be cited for violating city ordinance.
So Chief, just to reiterate, it sounds like your hands are tied. It sounds like everybody wants to do something fun, we're, we're all here for the community, there's no ill intent. But where you're coming from is from a safety perspective, saying, I'm, I'm held to the letter of the law, I have to do what the law says. And I would think that the people that are organizing this, that are advertising everywhere, by the way, I'm concerned, yeah, it's 100% going to happen. But what's going to happen if it's not, you guys aren't there to protect the public? It's not just going to be a walk down the street parade, that's what we're worried about, it's not, I mean, to me, that's what it sounds like, this is a bigger safety concern, everybody wants to do it safe, but if they're not willing to provide the required stuff that everybody has to provide, what happens when, unfortunately, July, this happens? I mean, this, I don't know, I'm worried about that.
So I, I would agree with you. If they choose to do a, a parade outside of permit, they would have to abide by all traffic laws. They cannot, they can't slow traffic, they can't stop traffic, they have to stop at every traffic control device, they have to abide by this. The problem is, in, in my professional opinion, if you have a parade at 25 mile an hour and kids running out to get candy, that's not very safe. And although I was not here, some of you may remember a three, three-year-old boy that, in Hepner, that was involved in a, a tragic incident, so I, I, it just, it's a, it's a tough deal. If I will provide traffic control for an unsanctioned event, then I'm basically defying the governor's order, which has been upheld by the Supreme Court. So it, it's just, it's just a rock and hard spot. The city has tried really hard to work with the event sponsor to try to make this work, but we can only go so far.
So what's holding them back? Like, why, why can't we, when they get there, if they want to make this a safe event? What I'm concerned about is the community's going to perceive this from a very different angle. They're going to say, the city's trying to squash our Fourth of July celebrations, they don't care, they care about COVID too much, not about everybody, you know? That's great, whatever, but that's not what it's about. The real thing is, this is a huge safety concern, and it only takes a few steps, from what I'm hearing, it's not huge things. What's preventing them from completing those? I wish whoever it was was on the line, that they could talk to us, because we can't help them, you know?
I, 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 I spoke to them on the phone Friday. Basically, what they have to do is get an insurance policy that covers them. And, and I told them, as much as I would love to do this, I'm not prepared to risk everything that I have in my life, because that's who's responsible. And if something happens, she's the one that's going to get sued. I, so get that insurance coverage. And then I, I explained to her that, as an example, in the city of Pendleton, when they do their, I can't, their, their.
Westford Parade.
The Westford Hope Parade, the VFW is the event sponsor. The police department holds, well, the permit process holds them to the same process that we have that, and have been doing for many years. They have, the VFW has two assigned individuals at each city block for five. They have, the VFW has two assigned individuals at each city block for five blocks. That's their job to mitigate uh people from congregating, parking cars or whatever. Again, that's that's not a police job, I'm not the mass police, I am not the COVID police. So that is incumbent upon the event sponsor to take care of that, and I explained that. Come up with a plan is pretty, to me, that's pretty simple. Um as of yesterday, I thought that's what was happening. Today, uh I was, the video said they're just gonna do the parade. So I, I, I don't, I don't know where the obstacles are.
I have a what if, what if Governor Brown successfully lifts the mandate, does that change it?
No, I think, no, the, the, the poli, okay, so the only thing that would change is that they would have to have an insurance coverage. If the governor doesn't keep the executive order in effect, then there's no need for them to adhere to that because there's no, there's no laws as they act here.
So if the mandate is lifted, it's just a matter of insurance, if the land mandate doesn't get lifted, then they have to have the traffic control.
Yes.
And mask and COVID.
But they're missing the required piece regardless, which is the insurance, like that's required for everybody. But they're not exempt, you know, speaking, they don't have a celebration, which everybody would like to partake in, you still have to follow the rules, you know?
So yes, they need to, they need to try to, to, okay, so if, if they don't have, if they can't get the insurance, they, they need to appeal it before the city council. The problem is, we don't have a policy in place or an ordinance or a resolution in place that gives them the right to appeal the insurance portion before the city council. And there's no way we can get that done in the next two months.
Two weeks or three?
Two months. It's gonna take us two months to do that. If the governor lifts the mandate, which I, my understanding as of, I believe it was yesterday, she's not even gonna review it until July ninth. So that means we're not gonna have a Fourth of July event and it kind of seemed like that might
Well, they're gonna have it. Well, I mean, the question is, what are we gonna do about it, if anything? I mean, the parade's gonna happen and the festivities are gonna happen, they've already said that they're gonna do that.
Yeah.
So it's like, now it's like, what, what's next?
I, I don't, nobody gets hurt, I mean, it's every kind of people say.
Sammy Tombs? Sammy, yes, you, Sammy.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been following them on um, on the internet, watching their discussions and stuff also. And I have given them suggestions to what Chief has suggested too. And they're just adamant they're having the parade. And I understand that everybody's frustrated, everybody wants to go back to a normal life, COVID is getting um the, it's, we're all tired of it, I understand that completely, but I also understand um Chief's positions, but I guess from my perspective, as a city, is there some kind of a compromise that we can come with, into agreement with them? I'm not sure what that would be, but I know that we're gonna have to keep people safe, and if this, this parade's gonna happen, whether we like it or not, are you gonna arrest people or are you gonna provide safety for them? I just am concerned about that, that's all.
Can I ask another question? Do I understand that there will be a fireworks display?
Yes.
How will we prevent people from congregating to watch that?
That is not my, I mean, uh, it's obviously true, it's not on city property. It's nearly where I have my own, my own question.
So I think their, the, the only concern is the parade.
For, 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 for me as the police chief, when it comes to the, the, the permit itself, the only thing that I'm concerned about is the parade.
Sure.
The other events, well, I, I think the organizations uh that uh are allowing those events probably are gonna have the same requirements as the insurance and, and uh I, I see Tori's here with the, the chamber, I, I, I'm assuming they're, they're not gonna necessarily open the city park like they did, yes, last year. You're gonna, they're still gonna allow the fireworks, I know they're gonna broadcast it on KO.
H R P, some of them.
Raise the radio a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Luis Campos is listed on here as one of the contacts for this, so maybe he wants to speak to this, he showed up at the meeting.
So Luis is, my understanding is sponsoring a soccer tournament, the soccer tournament. Um and, and I believe, I believe Luis, uh I, I talked to Luis and explained the need that for the insurance for him as well, and I, Karen might be able to.
I had a meeting and I, I've done some calling around. Uh and if the insurance company underwriters would allow you to purchase a one-time event policy, they said it would be between seven and eight hundred dollars. And that they would have to, they're, they're pursuing with the underwriters to see if they could even write that. I spoke to Luis today and uh, you know, it, it's just like, he would need more sponsors. But he is willing to try to abide by all of the rules. Because, you know, he, crowd, the amount of people in one area is his problem. It's not the streets or any of that. And so, you know, he's thought out about how many corner potties, if you put them, not all in one spot in a row, but if you put them in different sections of a park and, you know, and try to, and, and he knows he needs to get the vendors, you know, their uh health
cards, but yeah, and food handler cards.
Food handler cards and, and those kind of things, no, he's, he's working really hard to put on just this, just the soccer tournament on the third. Now, he's not affiliated necessarily with what's gonna go on on the fourth. But he's worked really hard to try to get uh, so I think that unless something is going to be made, I, the problem will be if the underwriters will allow a one-day event. You know, because I've been affiliated with other organizations and, you know, we just have a blanket policy for events. Then you call them up and you said, you know, we're having another event, blah, 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 this is the date. But that's not the case here. And then you have to get an underwriter to do that, there's an awful lot of background you have to put into place, yes. I think we've done it over the years, but, you know, like I say, everything I talk about is twenty, it was like
Sammy.
Hi.
Are you ready to set the floor, girl?
Thank you, um as far as the insurance is concerned, can Tori, does Tori get insurance for her events?
Tori, you wanna answer that?
Yes, we do, um we are covered on our fireworks program because that is what we are providing this year, so our insurance is covering that event.
What about the?
Our ins- uh, my board has chosen not to support and promote the parade. And um anything to do with COVID, we'd have to do an extreme amount of um crowd control, COVID action plan, uh hand signs, sanitization street, uh stations up and down the street. And, and it was just beyond what our board wanted to offer.
I meant in the past, Tori, in the past, did you have it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because we sanctioned the parade.
Okay.
The chamber sanctioned the parade.
Thank you, Tori. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I, 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 I just, the part that keeps getting to me is, so if they start the parade, what are we gonna do? That's, I think, the question that is before us. So if they start the parade, do we just let them do whatever? I don't think that's the right answer. If we go and say, okay, Chief, you're gonna do, you're gonna slow the parade down, that puts him in a hard spot, I don't, I, 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 my, I, I don't want, I don't think that it makes him a a supporter of it. I think he's doing his job to make sure that they're at least going this way. I, I don't know, I, I just, that's the thing, what, what do we have the local police do if they uh decide to have the parade? That's where I'm stuck at.
The unfortunate part is, is no matter what you do, somebody will be against what you're doing.
Yeah.
This is not a win-win situation, it's a lose-lose situation.
And it figures that they're gonna take advantage of that.
Right, and it doesn't matter if there's five thousand people in Boardman and only a hundred people are against it, only takes one to make a complaint to the state, at that point, they will come see the city of Boardman, the police chief, and that's where the problem lies, so.
It's unfortunate, they're very social, actually scanning us, all over social media and people, they're playing it off that it's a, it's our problem. We won't issue the permit, so they're already blaming the city, so I wish people knew or listen to this, that nobody's standing in the way, we're just trying, you have to follow the rules like everybody else, just because it's a celebration doesn't mean you can't, you have to still be safe, there's kids involved, I mean, I just, I don't understand this, like
Well, it appears to me that they're trying to be above the law, is what they're trying to do, they're, they're telling the governor that we don't care what you want, Chief, I'm sorry, but you're not helping us, so we're gonna do it anyway.
Yeah.
And what are you gonna do about it? And that's, that's the, the feeling that I get. And if the chief says, well, whoever the organizers, you get a citation, then, oh, oh my goodness, it's like the call of death.
Oh, yeah, well, well, that'll
Yeah, that, we're, we're bullying the citizens.
Horrible people.
Yeah, so
Understand that will I mean, Mr. Mayor, would, is it appropriate if you put out a statement that just said, hey, as Mayor Boardman, like I just wanted to let you guys know, we, we're all having fun, we gotta do it safely.
And, and address it as, as the city council also, and as the police department also, we are following the letter of the law. Unfortunately, the letter of the law stipulates these certain parameters that you're not willing to abide by. So we can't, we, in all good conscience, we can't sanction, nor can we encourage you to go ahead and violate the governor's edict, the, the mandated regulations just for your personal and the city, or, or the, some of the population of the city wanna have a parade. We don't have the necessary uh hand sanitizers like, like Mr. Gris was saying, every so many feet. We don't have a, a, a cordoned off area. The people are gonna congregate, they're gonna bust that six feet thing unless, you know, they say, oh, well, we're a family unit. Yeah, but well, you have twenty-four people in a family unit, um I don't know if there's that many family units in, in the city proper that are twenty-four. But still, we're in, we're in a rock and a hard place, and we're the bad guys if we say, no, you can't. But we have to follow the letter of the law. We have to, that's what we're charged with.
I can put a video together, that's not a problem, I'm not actually talking for a minute. It's uh it's yeah, I can do that.
Can I, can I just circle back and make sure I'm understanding everything here? Why not understand, we have a parade, we need insurance and a permit, and at this point, they are failing to comply with that, and they are going to disregard that rule, those rules.
They need insurance and a plan, a COVID distancing safety.
And in order to
In order to get a permit.
In order to get the permit.
Okay. And so there's a whole myriad of issues pertaining to the mandate related to COVID that we're trying to avoid also. And you don't wanna be the COVID police, and I get that. Also, with Fourth of July, the chamber has the insurance that they need to host their event. How is that event, is anybody managing any congregating that's going to inevitably occur to watch the fireworks?
That would be a question for Tori, of Luis, and anybody else that's event, sponsoring an event that's outside of the city's scope for a permit process.
Um, how, why would it be outside the city's scope?
Outside city street. Because the, 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 the fireworks venue is at the marina, the city does not own the marina, that belongs to the park district. If, if the park district wants, if, okay, if, if, if they allow that event, they still have to abide by the governor's order as well.
The park district then will manage that along the route of the river?
Well, it'll be a, it'll be, it's not gonna be my issue unless somebody complains that, hey, they're, they're violating the governor's order, then I gotta go down, I would contact probably either the event sponsor and/or the park and say, we've got a complaint, you have to get it. Just like I would if there was a, a parade, there's an issue, I would go to the event sponsor, it's the management of that event is upon them, not the police department, who are there to provide traffic control and safety. So uh Tori, can you answer the question uh on the insurance, I, I believe, well, I'll let her answer that.
So of our event, we are doing a broadcast across KOHU to let our, let, let everybody know in our community and across our Facebook page in the E, um North Marrow Times and anywhere we can, to let everybody know that we are not encouraging anybody to come and gather, we are trying to keep everybody to stay at their homes. We have increased the velocity of the fireworks to be above the tree line to allow for great viewing anywhere within the community. Um we're requesting you to keep your groups small and social distance and not go to the uh Boardman Marina to view the fireworks.
Thank you for that explanation, but do you have the Boardman Marina's cut off so that people can't go down there?
And do you, did you close the gate on the road to go into the marina?
So
There's gonna be food vendors down there out there.
On the day?
That would be Luis Campos's event.
On the third.
That's on the third, the only thing I know about this really getting their act together is on the third. I'm not so sure what's going on on the fourth.
As, as far as my understanding is, well, first of all, they, they can't, can't block access to the docks, the marina. But I believe, Tori, if, if I'm not mistaken, you, you're not allowing access in the park from the marina on. That's correct.
So the only access that would be, would be the people in the overflow parking area, in the areas that the um Park and Rec is using for their overflow parking. And then since Luis's event is on Saturday, that will decrease the congregation for the event on our day, and so by him doing his crowd control on his day and us encouraging people not to come down and gather and having nothing going on at the Fourth of July or down at the Marina on the fourth, that is a way for us to um kind of keep our gatherings low as well. What a family does on their own time without event, that's something that the Park and Rec is um their decision.
That can answer your questions. Big gray area.
City gray.
Right.
Say that the Park and Rec, that's on them. I can see like somebody from the parade would say, well, then it's on us, we're just gonna do what we want.
Is it on the city streets?
It's on the city streets, I, yeah.
So you can't, if it, there's, there's, there's traffic, there's all kinds of laws.
Vehicles, then, uh, cars, yeah, safety issues, for sure.
So if they're having an event on the park property, they still have to have their own private insurance, or is the park taking any liability for having that on their facility?
They'll, they'll not have their own insurance.
Then they're on it, but where does the, does the park take any liability perhaps?
The chamber has their own insurance.
On the third. On the third.
Like I said, when I talked to the people that are doing the third events, they understand that they're going to need insurance, and he had already talked to the insurance company. He knew the things I was saying to him when I talked to him today.
Louis is the one trying to get a one-day permit wrote out.
Right.
Cause that's what he said earlier.
Yes, yes, and.
Well, good job.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not a permit, it's an insurance.
Right, right, thank you, I was wrong, same.
So I, so this may has, this probably has very little bearing on it, but the insurance is critical. And an example, I did the Fourth of July parade just three years ago, and there was a semi pulling a load of logs. Uh which is a really big deal in town where I'm from, and they came around the typical parade route, which has been happening my entire life, from early childhood on. And there was a young kid sitting on the curb away from the parade route tracks. The trailer hooked his leg and that truck drug that boy. A block before they could get it stopped and get a hold of the truck driver, now he spent three months in the intensive care in Spokane at one of the hospitals. And he came out of it fine, he can walk, he has to have a lot, he had to have a lot of reconstructive surgeries. But that insurance is paramount, there's no, you're right, chief. This parade should not happen without insurance to protect everyone.
Is it a motorized parade or is it mixed, it's whatever people want to do?
No, they they agreed not to do animals and people walking because they knew that that would be extremely difficult to try to manage.
So it's all cars?
So we get a tractor, motorized vehicles.
Tractors.
I'm sure, yeah, I mean tractor, that it it just that's the moment event.
So maybe a little more safer.
It 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 made it safer in the aspect that they weren't having a bunch of people marching together or whatever, cause that's gonna, you know, it just, it just creates a lot of issues. Uh and 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 again, we 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 tried to find a route that that would open up the area so that they couldn't congregate together. Um, but my my my, I guess part of my problem is that we agreed to this, but then I understand they're gonna have an announcer. Announce at the probably the same place where they usually announce, and 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 the first thing that's gonna do is gonna cause the.
The long history, yeah.
Congregate, which is against what we're trying to do, um, but I mean.
Is there another opportunity to come together with them, and is there a deadline that? That they have to maybe change their minds and try to find a way to do it the right way? Yeah, so we we wanna work with you, we wanna make this as safe as we can, what are your barriers? You know, if we can help, help them, help them, help you understand, we're we're trying to do this, we wanna do it stuff fun, but in a safe way, that's gonna be so many.
Well, I I would say that we're always open to negotiations, and I I explain that to them in my letter that I forwarded to you guys. Uh that, you know, if we continue to try to address this issue, we're we're happy to, but at some point, they need to know. And for staffing purposes, I need to know because um I, it takes some time, on on the Fourth of July parade and events. None of my staff get the weekend off, they're they're working the entire time, so for me to staff the event. Um, especially with a longer route, uh it's gonna take more of my staff, and I've got staff that's already taking time off, so.
I also think that at different parties, I've seen you've had some kind of agreement, certain police officers.
We usually don't bring anybody in other than maybe the county, but but the county usually participates in the event. Uh, I spoke to the to the 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 undersheriff today. Um, he said that if there is not a sanctioned event, they would not be participating. Um, the fire chief with the Boardman Fire also told me that if there's not a sanctioned event, they would not be participating. So it boils down to, are we gonna sanction an event and take on the liability and?
I mean, you can't, your hands are tied, you're.
Unless we sanction the event as a city, if the city sanctions this event and uses their insurance to cover it. Then the only thing we have to deal with is the governor's repercussions.
But I'm not sure this this city have a a writer to do the public event?
See, I would have to check because I know that's not under our normal purview, yeah.
That's like the last straw if they don't get insurance.
I I can tell you that I did reach out to city county insurance, uh law enforcement, uh advisor explaining the situation and. Of course, they're not gonna wanna take on that liability, because not not only do you have the liability of somebody getting hurt, you also have the potential for. Um, if if for some reason we have a a a outbreak and it can tie back to the parade, uh somebody dies from COVID. Then the city can be sued.
So we're basically stuck as a group of seven plus uh the city staff on getting lynched because we don't come out and say, yeah, you can have your parade. Or you say, yeah, go ahead and have your parade, but we're not gonna be anywhere around.
Well, the biggest problem with coming in with that angle is we still have all of the frequent traffic, and during a typical parade, when we have all the police helping us. There's so much traffic coming off at our intersection to use our facilities, and that traffic has to be rerouted somehow to preserve safety.
Is that the same route they're intending on using to break down the middle of town, not that you go to.
So I I I cannot allow them to come across the freeway, oh, that's not, that that's a, that's.
That's not a part of the route, though.
No, if if they were to come across the freeway, so I can't back a traffic on a freeway.
Correct.
Oh, dot's not allowing that.
Yeah, you're saying so.
So that that's why we have it on the north side of town. Uh typically, uh we we go from Front Street on Kerr Street to Orbin Avenue, and then they turn right on Main or or North on Main Street. Go down Columbia and turn around and come back on Orbin Avenue, the 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 problem with that is. Uh, it 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 it, the the parade kind of falls back on itself and moves, so it's, it causes people to congregate even more. And so I suggested to them that we change the route, we came up with a route to go. Uh instead of us uh North on Main Street, we go all the way down Orbin Avenue, around the circle on to Columbia. Out past the uh Portview Apartments, and then come back on Olson Road, stop at the Sage Center or or Front Street in that area. Trying to open up both sides of the school for people to uh line up, they can separate. And then hopefully all those families that have properties along the route are gonna have their families come there rather than congregate, um and. The other issue is that is we get people who don't belong in in the mayor's driveway, and they go parking in the driveway, and stop and forget it now, I. I mean, those are some of the issues we face and try to mitigate, uh so we did propose a route where I thought was opening it up a little bit more. Uh, it makes it harder for us because we have to control all those egress uh uh ingress portions. And still keep fluff traffic flowing off freeway. But it's something we can probably manage, the the problem that we face is they're not complying with the governor's order. And if the city, the city can't tell, well, you could tell me to break the law, but I'm probably not gonna do that, I'm just telling it straight up front. Um, and that would probably be very unethical for me to do, um, so I.
I don't think we're telling them to break the law, I'm just saying, so if they're, so if they uh, how do we keep them safe? Is there, don't worry, is there no way?
If you want, if you want my professional opinion, you don't have the event, that's the thing, everybody's safe.
Correct, but how do we tell the.
How can we enforce that?
Community eventers for not having the event, because as far as I'm concerned, I don't know that, I don't want anybody arrested, they won't, I wouldn't sanction anybody being arrested.
But but you can't.
You can't, you can't arrest them, they didn't do anything, they just.
Uh, I I can't.
I'm not, that's a loaded question.
Yeah, I I I I don't need to wanna, I'm I'm hoping they don't ever put me in that position, because it's not, it's not optional.
Yeah, I don't, I just.
I don't have the answer, and that's why we're here. Um, I was really hopeful that they were gonna comply with the order. By having a a socially distancing plan that we could work with, um and have insurance. I I I don't think that that's too much to ask, that is the practice uh uh from the Pen Penelton Police Department. An hour on the phone at ten forty-five at night with the chief over there, and he's he's doing exactly like we're doing. Uh, most of their event sponsors are complying, you know, they don't get the permit.
We just gotta get an insurance, it's gotta get insurance, because if it's gonna be a motorized event, then that's what you're, you get insurance. If somebody's gonna walk, they're gonna walk, and it's like, I just don't think, I. Unless we don't allow them to walk. You're gonna be in a motorized thing, then there will be no rock, and.
They they've already agreed that they wouldn't have walking participants, they would not have animals.
So it seems like it just gotta get insurance, because we can get through the COVID thing, the COVID thing, to me, it's a piece of cake. That's my opinion, you can get through the COVID enough to keep the governor off the back. Cause all you need is a piece of paper, here you go, here's our plan. It'd be as simple as that.
What about people congregating to watch the parade, is that?
That's the problem.
That's the problem, sorry, sorry, okay, I was just reading a flyer right now.
That that that's the problem, I I I'm gonna throw out there, and and I see uh David North. Um, I'm 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 gonna throw out there that we had a. I don't know, all the days are going together, was it Friday we did the graduation parade?
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, David faced the same issues, he had to. Uh, uh, fill out a permit request, and obviously, uh, they have to have a uh an insurance policy to cover everybody, and I asked him specifically, do you have that, and he said yes. Um, we had initially discussed, uh, you know, in the years past, we've had all the graduating seniors group up and walk from high school. To the to the senior center here, and then go over to the grade school and meet with the kids, and he recognized that that. Under this environment, we can't do that, um, so they made it a motorized event. Um, so all the participants were in their vehicles, socially distanced, uh in addition to that, um. Uh, he didn't put out a big thing in the newspaper, hey, on this day, we're gonna do this, uh for the purpose of not creating a bunch of community members congregating.
Didn't the North Florida County tenants?
And we 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 were able to do the event, and I can tell you, if we had twenty people congregating at any one of the uh locations, I wouldn't be surprised. And of those, probably a lot of them were at C and D Restaurant eating lunch, they weren't part, they weren't willing participants in in the event, so, um. I I I I honestly don't believe it's that much to ask that they follow the rules, and 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 I think uh uh that's what we require, that's what we've required in the past. The only thing that's different this year uh is the governor's executive order, and we set down stipulations of abide by the order, if you had a plan, what's good to go. And I I I spelled that out, I actually called her and walked her through what she needs to do. I thought it was happening, as of today, they they decided that's not gonna happen, they're gonna do permitted, or the parade, you know, that's permitted. That's worrying.
I feel like it's our responsibility to discourage any illegal activity. In our business, and I mean, we put out a statement in the city that states, it's like, we want you to do this, but we need to follow the rules that are.
Our hands are tied, our hands are tied, they need to follow the steps that every single person does to keep people safe from tragedies like what you just talked about. They're not gonna, they're saying nothing's gonna happen, stuff happens, just get it done, figure it out, guys, like, otherwise, like, we cannot help you, but invited to the city council meeting, that's important, she was invited. She chose not to come, and that's what's frustrating, we're trying to help her, and they're, they're not even showing up, so. It's frustrating.
So, uh, I'm gonna put David to these, David, can you hear?
Yeah.
Put you on the spot.
Yes, thank you.
How how, how hard, how hard was it to comply with the the parade permit process?
How hard is the permit process?
Uh, how hard was it to to do everything you needed to do to make the process happen and do so legally and lawfully?
As far as uh submitting the parade permit and everything, that wasn't difficult at all, it was just following the process with it, but. Um, I mean, we intentionally didn't send that to uh the announcement about the parade to anyone other than the senior parents, just because we didn't want to have any issues. Uh, with COVID and too many people populating in a particular area.
Thank you.
I think.
I was just gonna say, we're we're that fast, guys, they already have the touch.
Yeah, yeah, already. I think the other thing is that the school district had that kind of insurance, which would, which would have, is an obstacle in the other case.
And 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 if you read my, if you read the emails with the sponsor, um, they advised me that they would. Reference uh the governor's executive order and and put out information on how to socially distance in those. Uh, media outlets and those newspaper articles, they didn't even comply with that.
Well, papers. I don't know, I don't think we have an answer. I think, Mr. Mayor, if we could put it on marquee, stating that, you know. We can't sanction it, um, and the parade is not complying with. Set rules and regulations and insurance requirements, it shouldn't happen.
So just thank you to our citizens, you know.
So are we willing to come out as a as a group and sanction it or not sanction it?
I think you're saying no, won't sanction.
So then I make a motion.
Well.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, as a city governing body of the city of Boardman. Not sanction the parade that has come up before us, strictly because there's no insurance, there's no COVID plan. And they are not willing to follow the rules and guidelines and regulations established by the governor. Can I have a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
I would like to perhaps present the fact that in the event, they can pull this together, in a timely manner, then we can proceed according to the law.
Hundred percent.
Absolutely, and give them that opportunity to make that happen, if that's a possibility.
So I I would say that I made that offer from from a law enforcement stance, and that's offers close stance. So I would recommend if you're gonna, if you're gonna take a vote, if you have that same.
I might change the wording of that, too, too, we won't sanction the event unless.
Right.
The proper insurance and.
Well.
Our government's following, we have it.
I I think this is the wrong avenue, I'm sorry, I I can't, I I can't, I go against it saying I don't sanction it. Is it not the right thing to do, they shouldn't, they should be doing it, but I do not wanna be a city leader telling the citizens of Boardman that they can't do something. I do not wanna be that mayor that says, no, you can't do that. We've had enough people in our government tell us what we can and can't do. And I just do not wanna be a part of a government organization that says, you can't do this, I know it's not right. But I do not wanna follow the footsteps of some other people and say, you can't do it, I have enough people telling me what I can and can't do. So I'm just trying to, every small rant, but I it's.
And and it's a good rant, but you have to have a solution.
I am, and there isn't a solution, I don't think, I don't think it's a political solution to saying, no, you, we're not gonna sanction it. Everybody's gonna hate me, everybody's gonna hate you, everybody's gonna hate you for not sanctioning it, but if I do sanction it. But if I do sanction it, now I've got a whole bu- a whole lot of other stuff. And that's why I think our city leaders in our country aren't coming out and saying, I don't sanction this. They let the prosecutors come out and do what they have to do and then we have to keep them safe. And I, I don't know what the answer is, and there is, well, the answer is, could you gain an insurance?
I would say, well, we all feel that frustration, but when the people don't have anything to push them forward, that stops them and us.
Correct.
And so in my opinion, if they can't provide the information or the paperwork that they need for it to be legally covered, then I see no reason why I should sit here and try to dance around what mandates or new apply the law. When it's just lack of life, that's what it is. They, they need those plans, they need that insurance. I'm here, elected for the city, I'm not gonna bend over and shy away from that fact. So I, like, I have to say, that's what choices we make.
We, we are part of our governments, whether we like it or not, we are, we now the city government, and we have to follow the law. This is the law. We're not saying we know we can't do this, what we're saying is, we are trying to help you, but you are not doing the stuff that you have to. Our hands are tied, literally, our hands are tied. It's not a matter of telling people what to do, it's just what is next, we have to follow. That's, we don't write those, that's by somebody bigger than us.
State is pressured.
Well, it's super frustrating.
Let's not let this get to be like the moving of the date of the council meeting. There was a motion and a setback.
And when we're in discussion.
Do we need to re-stay a motion because we had a good mention?
What do you have for the motion?
Willing to reconsider.
To make sure that we have the motion for it.
That he made a motion that the city council does not sanction the parade. Or due to the safety of the citizens.
But if we update it to that we would sanction the event should the proper protocols be.
Absolutely.
And I will amend my motion.
We're open to it, absolutely.
Yes.
To encompass what less than. Bringing agreement to the.
Yes, yes, I am. So I have an upstairs to be a restatement, but yes.
Yeah, well, I, I made a amendment, so you have a second.
Second.
Okay, sorry.
So your motion is second to the amended, um. We're gonna go over the call.
Can we read the final?
Yeah, sorry.
Albeo makes a motion for the city of Borden to not sanction.
I wanna hear, I wanna hear Albeo.
You have to have it written down so you can, so what have you written and read back?
I have it wrote that we, that the city boardman was not going to, um, sanction the city or the, the parade due to the safety of the citizens.
Amendment to that.
And then there's an amendment that if they show proper protocols, if they follow those.
Or if they adhere to the required, um, permits, permit, permits.
Guidelines.
Guidelines, permit guidelines. Absolutely.
So is that saying show proper, proper protocol to be followed, then?
They, they. Follow the proper, um, guidelines, I guess. Is that, is that about?
Can we just make it up and start over?
Yeah, so what I had was not to sanction the parade due to the safety of the citizens. And, uh, if the protocols of the parade were adhered to, the permit guidelines, the city would then sanction it. That's kind of where I was going, but it may not be the best wording, but that's where I was going.
Well, especially on all of our friends that are willing to be compromised, we're open to it. We don't, everybody's got their own opinion, but as a city council, I think that's a good open statement.
I just don't like using the word not and being so negative from the get-go. Um, I, I mean, I would prefer to start fresh and something to the effect that simply keeps it simple. Sanction the event should the proper protocols be compliant with.
And guidelines, for the permit process followed.
Yes. Perfect. Like I said, we're asking now. We, we would sanction the event.
Right. We would sanction the event.
In the event that the applicants.
Comply with all protocols and procedures in place.
Yeah, comply with.
So we're not sanctioning the event?
Shouldn't.
We, we're not saying yes or no to the sanction.
Yeah. All we're saying is that should the event sponsors get.
Meet the requirements.
Meet the requirements for the permit guidelines, we would sanction their parade.
So we sanction it or not?
We're not because they don't have the permit.
But this provides them the opportunity to do so. If they, after this, if anybody's watching and people start talking, they, you know, they've got a point, they're putting us between a rock and a hard place, they're putting the police department in a really tough spot. I know and believe that the citizens of our community wanna do the right thing, they wanna have fun and they wanna be safe. Let's give them an out to do that before we just put the hammer down and say, absolutely not.
You're not saying, and then they're gonna have it anyway.
Yes, so let's put this pin on it. The way that we want the positive outcome, we want to have this event, we want to follow the law. Give them an opportunity to regroup hopefully this week, figure out a way to make it happen.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it is a win-win event for everybody.
I don't know how fast your posts are seeing council meetings to YouTube, but even if a few of us linked in this meeting into the community pages with the timestamp where this conversation begins, they can see how much time I spent really trying to think about how we. Um, we, I would want to take my daughters to something like this, you know, but. Hopefully.
It is our responsibility as elected members of the council to, to follow the law.
Yeah.
And I hear the frustration and we want to help and work with our community members, but it has to be a give and take. They can't. And we wanna give that opportunity. And I think a positive statement on the record is that.
Thank you, I heard.
Okay, so I have, the city of Borden will sanction the event if the applicant complies with all protocols and requirements set.
Chief, does that cover the basis?
Absolutely. Uh, and I guess since we're still in discussion, I, I will tell you that, um, I'm still open and willing to try to negotiate with them, uh, how do you make this happen? I, I haven't just given up. Uh, I, I, I really thought as of yesterday that they were gonna have a law, so. But they were giving me the, the ability to.
Chief, did they, did they know about this meeting and they were already talking about it? Did they say, like, they're still working on it, or is it just like a, it may be out from some of the?
I have not spoke with them today. I did not get an email from her today. Uh, I was told that there's a video on Facebook. I watched the video and said that they just decided they weren't gonna do, get the permit and they were gonna do the event. That, that's what the video said from her. So. Uh, I'll reach out to her again tomorrow and find out exactly what their stance is, reiterate the avenue and the path to go forward on what they can do to mitigate that and, uh, see what their response is. Um, at some point, at some point, I need to explain to her that it's against the law to, uh, have it, have the event up, approved.
So can we, can we ask you to have that conversation with her sooner rather than later, so she has the maximum amount of time?
That would be tomorrow.
Like, perfect.
My concern is she posted on that she's gonna be gone in the next ten days and that her availability is gonna be rather difficult, so.
Well, she's gonna be in Yellowstone.
Yes.
Yeah, you saw this video.
So we go while we're out, so.
Well, nonetheless, regardless of.
I'm not a good candidate.
Regardless of that, in their personal circumstances, I think it's our duty to put everything out that we possibly can, give her every opportunity to comply.
Yes. And I know for sure she's not, and she's not the only one who's behind the.
And perhaps there's another person who is available to help.
Oh, yeah.
There is a second party, but I, I can tell you that the only one on the permit listed is her. So she's the event coordinator and manager for purposes of the permit. Mr. Mayor, it looks like Sandy Tom's here.
Yes, Sandy.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think you should go forward with the motion. Um, you haven't completed it yet, so, just a suggestion.
Okay. It's nine o'clock. I know. Um, we're still in our discussion. Is there any other discussion? Take them to the vote call, please.
Leslie?
Yes.
Albeo?
Hi.
Katie?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
Bertha?
Yes.
Hallkeeper?
No, I'm not, I'm, no, I'm, I'm sorry, no. So the motion passes six to one. All right, I, I know it's late, is there, uh, uh, we just move us through the, the remaining part of the, the agenda of both police reports.
Attached, uh, in, in your report, uh, or your package should be police report, keep it simple. Uh, are there any questions about that for? I'll handle that.
Beautiful department.
Uh, pretty much, you know. I would add a little bit, you know, our lives will be okay as a whole.
Excellent.
Wonderful.
Uh, what was part?
Their report is in the package.
What is it? Any questions about the work department as far as, uh, the outage that they have? Like, it's very, pretty impressive what went on, uh, as far as.
Yes, that was a big deal, I mean, you know, so.
I, I noticed that they have, um, I think it was, um, seven more uh, water meters to check or something. Nine more water meters to check this from last. Yeah, I know, there, yeah.
So the only funny thing about this was, uh, my wife said something about that. She saw it on Facebook before the mayor knew about it, that was the only thing that she said, and I was like, whatever, I don't get it, I wasn't on Facebook. So there's an outage, well, then I got the email later in that day, so. But that was the only thing, but I didn't care about that.
But that's kind of good.
My wife said, you should have been known first, but that's my wife.
Well.
I know there's a process.
It's not nice. It's all about timing and city law and.
Not saying that you were wrong, that I don't get any of that.
No, I mean, no, but it's, it's. What are you gonna do about it? I need to get covered.
Well, I get that, but that's not where somebody said, hey, Mr. Speaker, you don't know you have a water problem in your, in your city or the city council, that was a, that was a.
Can I make a recommendation in future, should an event like that occur, that the mayor notify?
Before it's fine.
You're wrong.
I just think it's really important because when there's federal issues or state issues, people go to the mayor first and we need to keep them in the loop.
Yeah.
And I get that that was an emergency and they kidnap her right away, just perhaps moving forward.
And you can succeed the other states individuals too. Not a problem. I do not that angle on that, but that was, that was my answer. All right, we'll just bypass our city manager, just wanna get done. No, I'm sorry, Karen. Is there anything that you would like to share outside of your, um, letter that you sent, you kind of also send every month, which I truly enjoy?
The only other thing is that, uh, I think by this Friday, we're going to put out the RFP for, uh, you know, we've talked about our system development charges over years, and so we're putting out the RFP to get that a whole new system designed for us. And so that, and it will give the bids back and it'll take a year probably to put them to group up with all that information. And there's only a couple of people that do that, so it's not gonna be, you know, like, we're not gonna have twenty-five bids picked out. The dog park, uh, Tori said today, sent out an email to all of us that, uh, they're getting ready to really get busy working on the dog park this next week or two, so you will see, um, been leveling the lot up there. We'll get the, we won't get the fence for maybe, but we'll get the parking on.
So trying to get that, that was.
Activity there every single day, every single day.
And so, um, and I, I was just gonna bring up, because I had not, you guys weren't here, but, um, when we built the field house, um, the city's responsibility part was to put in the rest, the public restroom within, and I haven't paid for them yet. And so I'm gonna try to get a check cut here before the end of this budget year to, to pay for those. So my credit runs out. Well, and people, people are using them and I've not been out there this year yet, but they say that they're don't have a nice and they're clean and they're what you want to public restroom to be, so.
This is the city clean or this is the park clean?
This, this city actually cleans these.
And they are nice to be here cleaning the little tots park, to be able to just stroll right back there using the bathroom. Or if you're racing home and you can't wait.
Well, then, then you see before COVID, I mean, that's become a lot more important now because before COVID, people would come in and use our, our public restrooms here. But then with the doors locked, you know, those little kids, yeah, it, it got to be an issue, so it's great to have this up there.
So are there any, uh, comments, conversations that you'd like to share?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In order for remedy, I would just like to see if we could get a plastics recycle ban act where the burden is with all the plastic that's floating in the river and on our city streets, we might be able to um, eliminate some of the garbage that's in our streets, if we could get a plastics recycle that.
Oh, then.
Oh, then we'll be, I mean, I'm sorry, I can answer that already.
And the reason.
Yes, because there's no money in recycling plastic.
No.
Oh, oh, oh.
Tell me about mine. And is there anybody else that would like to share? I'm gonna be on that though.
No, I could, I mean, I could be willing just to have, to be honest, collect it in a spot and put, dump it in one spot, or if they wanna recycle it, I don't care. Oh, and, yeah, yeah, David, yeah, 'cause I've asked you this, I'm into recycling and we.
And there is money. Not enough of them.
Well, sometimes we'll talk about the, the.
Well, we've got time now.
We'll go.
Was there any other comments from the council? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have other comments. Uh, so I have, that, I hear your turn to speak.
Hi, Eric.
Yeah.